Call to order, the meeting for Austin City Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Two items on the agenda tonight, both open public hearings, but before we get to those, we've got to approve the minutes from our last meeting, which was Tuesday, July ninth. Do any of the commissioners have any changes or additions to those minutes as written? Not, could I please get a motion in a second to approve those minutes as written?
So moved.
And I'll second.
Thank you, I have a motion from Commissioner Lindberg and a second from Commissioner Swenson to approve the minutes from July ninth as written. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries six zero and those minutes are approved. First item is an open public hearing for thirteen hundred twenty-eighth Street Southwest. We have an appeal for the twelve and a half foot setback on a six-foot privacy fence in the side yard. Holly?
Yes, as noted, the petitioner is asking to move their existing fence up to the property line, which would be within that twelve and a half foot corner side yard setback that's required in an R one residential district. The property is in a residential neighborhood. The proposed fencing would be a six-foot tall privacy fence and is located on a corner lot. The fence will be located in the rear side yard. There are no drives or intersections in the area of the fence and the fence would not affect visibility and here's the drawing that the petitioner provided, just showing the existing fence here and then moving it to this corner of the house and then shifting it north to the property line. And then there's a large public right-of-way here between their property line and the I believe it looks like the petitioners are here. If you have any questions for them? So this shows the existing fence here. And as shown on their drawing, it would start here and then go along the property line. And this is kind of the larger neighborhood area where they are located. Kind of near the outskirts of our city limits. This is Hilliers for reference, over here.
I have one question, if you could come up, please, to the podium. And then state your name and your address for the record.
Megan Shakira.
Louis Shakira.
It's thirteen hundred twenty-eighth Street Southwest.
Okay, thank you. On the south side, there's also an existing, what is it, three-foot chain link right now?
Yeah.
Are you putting the six-foot privacy fence on that south line as well?
Yeah, we're trying to close the whole house.
Okay.
So it's, it goes...
Your neighbor has one there as well, right? Existing wooden one, six-foot?
Yeah.
And the space between those two will be what?
Uh...
You're right up against each other?
It's like that much, yeah.
So what do you do with that space in between? Who takes care of that?
We do, I guess.
Uh, like...
Because we have two fences there right now, so we just clean whatever...
We just try to clean that spot right there ourselves.
Okay.
I know.
Yeah, I went and looked at it, I drove by it, I didn't see any issues of visibility-wise or anything like that. Commissioners, anybody else got anything?
A question, is there a right-of-way there for the city?
Yeah, this blue highlighted line is their property line.
Okay.
And that area between the street and that blue line are well, I mean, the street plus areas, all right.
Okay, so you're, they want to go up to the property line, the current property line, not all the way over to the...
No, no, we're not affecting any.
Okay.
So just imagine if the, over the next fifty years, the city continues its complete streets program and gets to this neighborhood, there will be a sidewalk between that aqua line and the edge of the road with a boulevard, just like you see in other neighborhoods. So this fence, you know, just imagine the potentiality for there to be a sidewalk there.
Okay.
Yep, and it would be right up against the fence because the first, that's fifteen feet from that blue line to the curb and the first ten feet is the utility easement and then the next five would be sidewalk, whatever goes in.
Let me pull up their application, I believe it was a little shy of right up to the property line, but let me pull that up again.
One question.
Yeah, let's see. It says requesting to extend current fencing thirteen feet towards the road on the north. So that's from where it is now, oops. Thirteen feet would be about here, looks like it's about, well, it's hard to measure exactly on here, but...
You said it would be about a foot from the property line.
Anything else, commissioners? Nothing? Anything else? Yeah?
If I could just ask a couple of questions. Do you have the property corner stake so you know where the property line is to ensure that you're not out in the public right-of-way with the proposed fence?
I think it is like a metal post that is showing where the property goes, that goes straight, and then that's where we just follow the same fence that is system. So to the, I think it's like a little metal bar at the end of the road where it's showing where the house...
We just want to ensure that it's the homeowner's responsibility to make sure that the fence goes in on your property and not out in the public right-of-way. And then, secondly, Holly, I don't know if you had an opportunity to look at any of the original plats, but a lot of times in these new developments, there is a ten-foot utility easement behind the right-of-way on the private property for underground utility construction.
Yeah, we could, we, the planning commission, if they decided to approve, could approve with the condition that they get, you know, get approval from the utilities if there is a, if there is a utility easement. I guess I don't know that, if there is or isn't in that spot.
And where is that, ten feet, Stephen?
It's on the property generally.
It would fall inside the property lines.
Really? Okay.
Yes.
And that's, that's an underground easement?
Yes. I'm looking it up.
Is it running north and south?
It would be north and south on twenty-eighth Street and also east-west on Twelfth Avenue.
The person asking questions is Stephen Lang, our city engineer.
Here and here, I'm not sure about the back line at all. We have, never as I can recollect, addressed that. Is that something we need to put in conditions or something?
Well, the fence installer should do a locator call and if there's anything there, but it is good to be aware, most older areas, the utility easements are on the, on the back property line.
Right.
But Mr. Lang's experience on that sort of thing is, are better than mine. So if he believes there's a likelihood, there's a utility easement there, that's important. You can't build on the utility easement.
Not, excuse me, sorry to interrupt again, I'm not seeing one on our GIS map. Would have to go back and double-check the actual plat to see if there was an easement platted originally for that property.
Got a question. You guys talking about the electric stuff on top? Because we, uh, we, like a month ago or two, we were, we wondering where's all the electric in case if you guys approve it. And they marked it and they was, normally it was in the front of the house and in the size where we're not gonna be using that spot. That's what they marked, where's the line is electric stuff. There wasn't nothing near inside the fence.
Okay.
So you had to locate, done then?
Uh, yeah, we have located, a month ago. They came and marked it with little flags and then it's not in, inside the fence where we're trying to put it at. We want to make sure that we're not cutting any electric too, so that's why we tried to ask for it and they came and marked, so there wasn't nothing close to it.
This would be a recommendation to city council to approve, deny, or approve with conditions.
Any other questions, commissioners? Anybody ready to make a motion?
Turned it aside, oh, that, I mean, you almost have to consider the utilities, right? And what, can you ignore that? So can you make a conditional?
Yeah, you can.
If it's approved by, use that as a condition?
Yeah, absolutely. There's still some question about the utility piece, so is that something we have to put in a condition for? And how would we do that?
Wouldn't hurt anything to put one in.
And how would you want that?
They, if you decided to approve, well, deny, obviously that wouldn't be an issue, but if you decided to approve with conditions, it could be something like, it's approved as long as they're not in the utility easement area.
Approved condition upon confirming that the, that there are no utility easements, something like that, not complicated.
Something like that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, make a motion to approve with that condition.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Bartley and a second from Commissioner Swenson to recommend a council to approve the request with, under the condition that there are no conflicts with the utility easement for the location of the fence. Any further discussion? Now, we'll go ahead and vote, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries six zero, request is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this will go to our city council for a final decision based on the planning commission's recommendation on Monday. So we'll know Monday if you want to connect after that.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is also an open public hearing. We have an application for conditional use permit for a proposed twelve-lot planned unit development. Ms. Wallace?
Yeah, these are not things that we see very commonly. There are a few steps to approving this type of subdivision. The petitioner is Matt Rolfe, doing business as Advanced Building Movers of Rochester, out of Hayfield, Minnesota. The current zoning in this area is R one single-family residential. The surrounding land uses are also a single-family residential and it is currently used as a single-family residential lot. The applicable ordinances are primarily Section eleven point oh nine one regarding planned unit developments and Section eleven point zero eight eight conditional use permits. Because there's so many factors involved, I just put the actual ordinances in your materials and then just made comments throughout the ordinances for your reference. So I'm just going to go through the ordinance as I had shared with you. The, so eleven point zero nine one planned unit development goes through different areas such as the purpose, which is to encourage more creative and efficient development of land than is possible under more restrictive application of zoning requirements, while at the same time meeting the standards and purposes of the comprehensive plan and preserving the health, health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. Under B, it notes that it's allowed, to allow mixture of residential units in an integrated and well-planned area. And then I made a note that we should consider how the design of this proposed common interest community best serves the residents and would fit in the area as it evolves from rural to city services, including stormwater, roads, utilities, lighting, which would be a typical city subdivision, so that it doesn't become a barrier to or negatively impact future development or the proposed development or existing homes. C, to ensure concentration of open space into more usable areas and preservation of natural area, natural and scenic areas. There are no known areas of preservation in that particular section. And then lists some permitted uses within a planned unit development, dwelling units and detached clustered, semi-detached, detached, or multi-stored structures or combinations thereof. This proposed use is permitted as a planned unit development. The conditional use permit is required and that's another section that we will go through The planned unit and then under subdivision three, it indicates that the planned unit development must be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. The future land use plan shows, inner comprehensive plan shows that this area is designated as suburban low-density neighborhood, which allows two to five units per acre. Here the total area is approximately five acres with a proposed twelve units or two point four units per acre. And I'll just zoom down to what that kind of looks like. Actually, the, do you have, you have a...
I have tons of stuff and I'll go over, I'm gonna go over everything that...
Yeah, it looks like you have some, maybe some things that would be easy to look at from a proposed...
I do.
...subdivision perspective? Do you have a, can I see what you have there, maybe? This is Les Conway, who is here on behalf of the developer and he's brought some drawings. They are in the packet, but they're more engineering-type drawings.
What we're proposing is this.
Um, I'll, I'll present right now the rest of this and then you can...
And then here I have all of the parsing. I have a larger aerial view that kind of addresses most of your comments.
Oh, okay, sure.
And then I also have the preliminary plot.
Okay, okay. So this is a part of those documents, the proposed preliminary plat that shows, shows a road here and then this area, it's hard to see my little cursor here, but the darker outlined area is the area where this subdivision would be developed. It has this road that's highlighted in yellow, which is an area where the utilities has required a easement if this is the final design. And then there are several lots drawn out here and then the rest of this area would be common area that would be managed by an HOA. I'm just going to go back up here to where I was. So the applicant must apply for and seek again approval of a conditional use permit following the procedural steps set forth in the planned unit development ordinance. So they are required to present the following exhibits as part of their conditional use application and approval of a development plan. So they need to provide a preliminary development plan, a preliminary plat. So the development plan to me is how they will actually develop that subdivision, so what, how the phases would be done over time. And then the preliminary plat, which was just pointed out, with necessary documentation as required under subdivision regulations or all, or that portion of the project to be platted, which we had as partially provided, the proposed PUD could harmonize, let's see, I did skip one here. The tract does consist of multiple parcels that will need to be combined into one tax parcel as condition of approval. Right now they are just individual lots. The, there should be an explanation of the character and need for the planned unit development. This was acquired as vacant, has vacant and uninhabitable homes, acquired through tax forfeiture and private sale. Verbally, when we talked, there was a desire expressed to add manufactured, a manufactured home park. However, the developer did not have enough acreage to do a manufactured home park. The city requires ten acres and instead they proposed to do a planned unit development organized as a common interest community. We don't actually allow manufactured homes in the city unless they're in a manufactured home park, so they would be required to do minimum modular homes, which are off-site constructed, subject to the building code, or just a regular stick-built home. They are required to have a statement of proposed financing of the planned unit development, which was not provided. There was some discussion about potentially getting affordable housing subsidy if they used modular homes. They're required to have a statement of present ownership, which was included in the packet. The general, and then homes in the surrounding area. They need to have a general indication of the expected schedule of development, including sequential phasing and time schedules, which was not provided. The ma, a map indicating proposed land uses, including housing units and types of vehicular and pedestrian circulation, open spaces, which was partially provided. Pedestrian access and vehicle parking wasn't clear, but the housing units again would be modular stick-built. Let's see, a full description on how government services would be provided to the development, including sanitary sewer, stormwater systems, streets, and other public utilities. Austin Utilities did provide, by, provide easement information. The applicant does not plan to provide city water, but proposes an alternate water system. The uses should not have an undue or adverse impact on the reasonable enjoyment of neighboring properties and would not be detrimental to the potential surrounding uses. I did receive a call from, we see, received contacts from at least three neighbors and I see, can you raise your hand if you're a neighbor? So there are, yeah, there are a few people here in addition to the people that called. And they mostly expressed that they just wanted to learn more about the project. Each phase of the proposed development as it is proposed to be completed must be of sufficient size, composition, and arrangement, that it is, its construction, marketing, and operation of dwelling units and common open spaces are balanced and coordinated. We do not, again, have a phased plan or financial information at this time and it's not clear how the project will be constructed or completed and what financial risk there might be to the community or neighborhood if it was not completed. The planned unit development cannot create an excessive burden on public facilities and utilities. That's unclear at this point, but electric, gas, and sanitary sewer are readily available. City water and roads would require additional planning. The proposed total development must be designed in a manner to form a desirable and unified environment within its own boundaries. Again, questions about accessibility, or no, this is a different issue. There are questions about accessibility for fire and off-street parking options, which goes along with the fire code requirements. There can be, the, the public hearings for the conditional use permit and preliminary plaque could be done separately, but here they are combined. There's just a lot of procedural information in this area of the ordinance. The, this talks about the property conveyance and in this instance, they are intending to operate as a, a common interest community with proposed homeowner association bylaws. So the, the land will be owned and operated as an HOA, but individual homes could be rented or, or owned. Let's see, location size, shape, size, and character of the common open space must be suitable for the planned development. This property, again, will have one owner. The proposed lots are slightly larger than minimum size required in the city, with a minimum of sixty feet of frontage. The common open space appears to be mostly to provide yards for each housing unit with an added area for stormwater retention, but I did not see any other amenities shown. Other things just to, that I highlighted to note, where there is more than one property served from the same water service line, shut-off valve must be located in such a way that each unit service may be shut off by the city in addition to the normally supplied shut-off at the street, which would be hard to do if it's a privately-owned system. And then we go into the conditional use criteria, which requires that the use will be sufficiently compatible, which is similar to the things in the, the PUD ordinance as well. But the use will be compatible, sufficiently compatible or separated by distance or screening from adjacent residentially-zoned or used land, so that existing homes will not be depreciated in value and there will be no deterrents to development of vacant land. What that might look like for another housing development, it can be flexible. Keep in mind that the CUP or the conditional use permit could apply to any kind of development, could be commercial or other, in this instance, it's residential. Under Part G, the use will not cause any traffic hazard or condens, congestion, adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or will be provided. I just have a note here, the city has not permitted any new subdivisions without city water. Maybe some examples of where the system may be used locally and how the lots might tie into city water at some point should be provided. There was some discussion about using existing wells and that's the system that they're proposing, that each well would feed four to six homes with the HOA providing maintenance. And some of that was in an email that was attached to your packet. There are no proposed water-related agreements providing, provided in their HOA bylaws that they sent and that was noted that the Minnesota Department of Health that deals with wells and Department of Labor and Industry with plumbing would be involved. Additionally, conditions with the city council considers necessary to protect the best interests of the surrounding area or the community as a whole may allow council to impose additional standards and requirements. Increasing required lot size or yard dimensions, here they meet our current requirements. Controlling the location and number of vehicle access points. We believe that needs to be discussed further with our engineering department regarding street and parking related issues, as well as the street width and increasing number of required off-street parking spaces. No lighting is, or signs are proposed at this point. No screening landscaping or other facilities to protect adjacent or nearby property are proposed. Yards are proposed as open space, there are some things that are not applicable here. There is a boundary survey that was included. We have verified that the owner of the proposed development does own the parcels involved in this proposal. involved in this proposal. And then there's just some additional information about what will happen next, based on any of the decisions or discussions that happened here tonight. The planning commission will make a recommendation to city council to approve, deny or approve with conditions, a conditional use permit, which is typical to have conditions, a preliminary plat and preliminary development plan. If the planning commission recommends approval of the CUP, the applicant will file a final development plan and final plat with any recommended modifications to the plat and development plan within 90 days. If the final plat and final development are approved, the planning and zoning administrator will issue the CUP, conditional use permit. Our city engineer made some-
Holly, Holly, on that second approval, after the 90 days or within 90 days, the final plat-
Yeah, so right now you're just looking at preliminary plat-
Right, the final plat and final development plan are approved, then you issue the CUP.
My understanding is that just goes back to the council, yeah.
Council, okay. We only see this once.
Yeah, and then, yep, and I would just incorporate whatever the requirements were approved. So if there's any modifications, we would require that those be included. Our city engineer commented that new developments such as this would require component, all the components of a development agreement, which includes but not limited to new and existing roadways designed to meet city standards with curb and gutter, pedestrian access routes including sidewalks and/or trails, all associated public utilities such as sewer, gas, water and electric, site grading and stormwater management plan and other ancillary items that we have in our standard development agreement. I didn't actually include the standard development agreement in this packet, which maybe I should have, but. Our fire chief also commented, he included fire code requirements here that are specific about, that access road shall extend to within 150 feet of all portions of a facility and all portions of exterior walls of the first story of a building as measured by an approved route around the exterior of the building or facility. Dead-end roads longer than 150 feet designed to meet the requirements above shall have an approved turnaround. And then apparatus roads have to be a minimum of 20 feet in width and support up to 75,000 pounds. Roads with, apparatus roads with a hydrant shall be 26 feet in width. Roads 20 to 26 feet in width shall be marked on both sides with fire lane signs indicating no parking. Roads more than 26 feet but less than 32 feet wide shall be marked on one side. I'll have to go back and look and see what the road widths are exactly here, but, 24, okay. Yep, okay. So right now with the, the way it's designed or proposed, there would have to be no parking, yeah, on both sides or on the street. And then he noted that this is not necessarily a complete list of fire code requirements and that there should be some revised plans or further discussion on that as well. And then there are several attachments. This attachment shows, and our city engineer maybe can talk a little bit about that as well, but this shows kind of what could be planned for future roads, should that area be further developed or subdivided. Presumably far into the future, but making sure that we have a logical plan in place as areas do become more developed. And this shows just an overlay of this particular proposed subdivision over where for future streets might go. Drainage area summary as noted. And then this is the, the packet for the proposed development, including a number of items. And the applicant can go over these with you to some degree. This just has a little more detail I can. It's just notes all the property owners right now in this area. There's a stormwater plan included. And then this was something the applicant sent me to kind of describe the alternative water system that they were proposing. And then this was, was an email between myself and Les Conway, the engineer that the applicant hired to do these drawings and planning for him. And then these are the bylaws that were included. And then just the list of properties where notices were sent. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions of me or do you want to hear from the applicant?
Well, there's a number of the items listed that say, no information or not complete yet or whatever, so are we actually looking to approve this or just, I mean?
It could potentially be continued, I guess, or it could be denied.
Well, are you satisfied that everything you need is here?
No, I don't feel like everything was provided. He, the applicant may have brought things to the meeting as well. We just, we had started this, I think, in May, and there were some additional things that were required, and it got put off. And then I realized that we also needed to do a conditional use permit, so asked them to also apply for the CUP. So that was done in July. And then we kind of went back and forth gathering information until I think July 29th was the last submittal I got. And then, of course, that came right up to the notices that we had to send out for this meeting so that it could get on the August agenda. And then we had, because we finally had as much as we could get, we had a staff meeting, and out of that came some additional suggestions. And the applicant didn't have time, I think, to address all of those things.
So the public hearing is open now?
Any questions for Holly from the commissioners?
No.
Then I guess it is. Would you like to come up, Mr. Conway? To state your name and address, please, for the record.
Will do. My name is Les Conway. I'm with WSE Massey. I'm a senior engineer with our engineering firm, and on behalf of Matt Ralph, the owner and developer, I'm here. So should I give my handouts to you to hand out, or can I hand them out?
Um, are you comfortable? Yeah, you can, you approach the, if you're doing these.
Okay. I made 15 copies, so I think I got-
Oh, yeah, I'll take a copy.
Hey, I want to hand them out to people.
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Conway, maybe before we get down into the weeds on some of the details and stuff, I would just like to know, I'm a little confused, what, just upfront, why, why a planned development? Why not just plat the property and develop the 12 lots?
Two separate reasons is that we want the road to be private, we want the utilities to be private. The planned urban development allows us the flexibility to develop the property outside of a traditional, outside of a traditional preliminary plat and final plat.
Okay.
I've got to take one of these, but you can have the rest of those. So what ends up happening is, is that whenever you're going to take a property like this, and as you saw, Holly did a nice job of kind of summarizing the whole thing, we satisfy all the requirements of R1 housing with density, density ratio and setbacks and those particular items, but we have the opportunity to actually develop a, a planned community development that I'll get into as far as the details go, but paved road, fenced in, utilities, onsite stormwater, that will be managed by the homeowners association. And the homeowners association is what allows us to maintain the quality of the development versus actually doing what you're suggesting is that we just plat it and sell those properties. We want to actually improve the quality of development in this neighborhood. We want property values to go up so that people think it's worth it. And kind of the biggest thing that I want to address here tonight was kind of the layout that engineering came back with and how it, all of these properties were condemned, they were bought in forfeiture. Right now, if someone was to come into that area and want to develop, or for instance, buy a property and build a house, it's not really an economic or, it's not really a favorable place if you want to develop it. We believe that the PUD with the CUP and actually proposing this community actually increases property values and actually makes for a favorable purchase of one of our properties, and it actually would increase development in the area. That's kind of the short version.
Okay. So will the homes, they'll be owned, rented?
So in a, in a, in a planned urban development, everything is private. When you come back to this particular drawing, there is a single lot on each in, that, that would actually be platted. You can purchase those or lease them, but you would come in and you would put what we're referring to as modular homes or single slab. The common phrase today is patio home, where everything is on the same level. It produces affordable housing. It produces a community that we would believe that people would want to move into because it is controlled, and it has a lot of amenities to it. And it would actually allow us to control all of that area around there and not turn it into a mobile home park. So, having said that, if I could address the council, or the commission. We're expecting that, we want a homeowners association, we want private roads, we want private utilities, we want fenced-in area, paved road, and we really want to work with the city of Austin so that we can get our CUP approved, because it was highlighted in the document that she looked, that Holly went through, that if we fail here, we have to wait an entire year before we can come back. And we don't really want to wait a year. We would like to work with the city of Austin and come up with a satisfactory solution. And we also want to work with staff of the city of Austin. I think right now, I think I kind of feel, having done this and basically I've dealt with, with Holly, but I believe that, I believe, I believe that we can work with city engineering, Austin Public Utilities, we can work with folks and actually come up with a solution where we address a lot of the concerns and a lot of the questions. We produced a preliminary plat, we produced a preliminary construction plan set. We've tried to address a lot of the things so that you can get a feel for what we're trying to do. But I believe tonight is my opportunity to talk with you and indicate that we want to move forward, and you can certainly put conditions on our approval, but I don't believe that there's really that many conditions that we need if you actually recognize what we're trying to do. The biggest item is, is that I gave you a set of 11 by 17s, and if you look at, she actually pulled it up here, but if you look at the last two sheets, which was kind of a future layout that was provided back to us, and we don't believe this is the direction that we want to go. I think that what we have is an area that right now is pretty, pretty well, well, the six lots that Matt Ralph bought were forfeiture. They, they'll, they'll be demolished, they'll be taken out of the way, and when you look at the property around here, the planned community development, what we're proposing to do is develop this southeast quadrant, about six acres, five plus acres, into a community that would be fenced in, have paved roads, have utilities, have plenty of open space for folks, and it would allow development in this area that would actually spur, or the development would be spurred by the fact that we're bringing in new homes, new roadways, new utilities, and actually developing the property. There's a couple of properties up here on the northeast corner. Owner is, last name is the same, but the name, the first names are a little different. Right now, there's not really a lot of development on those. The development that I just called out here actually has a roadway coming right through probably a $500,000 piece of property and this piece of property, and these are actually nice homes. This area along here is actually developed pretty nicely. The area to the north are long, single properties that are, that I don't really see this type of a development occurring. What I do see, and I've provided this with you, I've provided you the zoning map, if you look at the one on the wall, you kind of cut off at the park, and we're north of the park where that green square is up there. And so what you have is, is that these two little squares right here are the areas that we're referring to. So you have a industrial corridor along, I actually have maps. I know this is incredible. There it is. So you have an industrial corridor running through here, you have a, a public utility over here and a substation here. We're talking about this area here. This is unannexed, this property is annexed, and then you've got Watson, which is industrial zoned as well. Then you have the big park down here. You've actually designated this area out here for a single-family residential. This is single-family residential, and this has already been developed as single-family residential. These areas that have also been annexed are single-family residential, they're larger rural settings. They don't have sidewalk, they don't have stormwater culverts, they use mostly culverts and drainage to that effect, and they're gravel roads. We believe that that's the way to actually start developing this area, because all of these are gravel roads, this is gravel, and we believe that we'll pave our area with a new road, but for right now, 28th still needs work on it, and whether or not water gets brought down that road or not. But I believe that we can service our area with the utilities that are there for what we're trying to do.
Is there sewer out there right now?
There is a sewer line that runs along 28th Street and ends at the end of the road.
And you'd be connecting to that?
We would like to coordinate precincts, sanitary, to feed all of our stuff and make a single connection into the public sewer that's on 28th.
Okay, and then I'd imagine that the gravel road will need to be updated, correct? So then adjacent-
Right now, the gravel road runs here, and we would be glad, glad to pave this, but right now, there is no way to actually know what we would do for curb or gutter, there's, I mean, that's, that's down the road-a-way's in a rural setting.
Sure, I'm just curious as to if it would ever be a requirement for that road to be- Sure, I'm just curious as to if it would ever be a requirement for that road to be paved or curb finished, I guess?
And I believe we're talking down the road a ways.
Right, but when that happens, the neighboring property owners are going to be assessed. So there's a concern there, you know, and I, and I get the property value thing, but not everybody's excited about property values going up because that comes with additional assessment costs, right?
Understand.
So I'm just trying to get the...
If, if I was looking, if from my years of engineering, if I was looking at the gravel road down the way, I think based on the development that's up in this area north of here, I believe it would be a rural section with still ditches if it was paved. I don't think you want to pave it until you can actually bring water down there. And I believe the rest of the way, you know, bringing it all the way around, it comes all the way around and comes back this direction. I think something just needs to happen there and I believe this is the start of it.
Yep, and I understand that. It's just, you know, once you set these things in motion, the other property owners may be left with a financial burden. You know, any sort of development, in my opinion, there's a cost involved with that.
You would still have the opportunity to assess the HOA for any developments along 28th.
Sure, sure, okay.
Everybody would pay their fair share going up and down from 11th all the way over to 14th.
Right.
If it ever decided to go that way. And I believe that's a ways down the road. I think right now, this area up here is perfect for a rural setting. But we want to do paved roads in ours just because we want to make it nice. I've kind of pointed out the zoning map. I've let you actually see what's actually happening out there. On the zoning map itself, I believe that there's plenty of room to continue single-family residential in this area, which would be south of the area that we're talking about also over to the east. I believe you already have established an industrial corridor along 11th, plus you have the railroad. You have the park farther down to the south, but I believe that any future development in this area would still, at least in the short term, be rural development with ditches along the road, it could be paved, there'd be culverts, and whatever utilities are available on 11th could actually start to come into the east or come from the west to the east for development. So right now, we do have sanitary sewer there. We want to develop that southeast quadrant, which has 11th Avenue... 11th Avenue, 28th, 31st, and 14th. And we want to develop the southeast coordinate, the quadrant there, and we want it to be a planned urban development for this particular project. So there were quite a few comments that were highlighted in the documents that Holly provided. What we're looking at is, first of all, the area has gone into decay for several years, which is why the properties were available to get picked up. There's properties along 31st or 30th that are well-developed, nice homes, nice-sized lots. There's properties along 11th that are also that way, and we don't expect those to change. But what we do believe needs to change is the development along 28th, and right now we've picked up six of those nine lots. And we want to make those six lots into a single development that provides affordable housing. Now, we use that phrase quite a bit, and affordable housing is an incredible push in the United States today, and it's an incredible push in the state of Minnesota. Now, the difference, what we're looking at is, we're looking at modular homes and we are looking at slab-on-grade houses, which are basically 12 to 1600 square feet with a front garage, they call them patio homes. A modular home, which comes in, the difference between a modular home and a manufactured home are the construction practices that are used for constructing it. In the eight and a half by 11 handout that I gave you, I actually provided this to the city of Austin. And the modular home, the substantial difference in a modular home is the fact that it's allowed, you can do VA, FHA, USDA, plus regular commercial financing for a mortgage. That's not allowed necessarily for a manufactured home. We're doing this as an HOA, we want these properties to sell. If they don't sell, then they, they, they might be leased, but the ideal situation would be the development here, putting homes on there that people can come in as a first-time home buyer and purchase for $200,000 to $250,000, which is substantially different than what a regular home would cost on the market today. They're upwards of $400,000 for a regular stick-built home. So these have tremendous opportunities for first-time home buyers and to get people in there for affordable housing. You heard Holly make reference that if we go down this route, we actually are accessible to different options with not only the city of Austin, but also the state of Minnesota to help us with, with, with what we want to do. We're seeing a tremendous, it, it, it's a, it's a really good model for people who have the opportunity to actually develop it.
So you said you, you've got six lots, is that, are we going to develop it into more than six lots?
So, based on the highlights that were there.
Yeah.
We're going to take those six lots, we're going to plat it as a single property, and then we're going to put easements on it and lay everything out, and it'll be a planned urban development with an HOA contract to govern it.
But it's 12 homes.
12 homes.
Okay.
So you mentioned that they could be leased if they're not purchased? How do you keep the, the lease or the rent down to keep them affordable?
So, let's suppose, let's suppose that you put in all the utilities and you build the roadway and now you have these 12 lots that have been platted. So to get interest in, the owner could come in, put a modular home on one, and he could sell it or lease it. So the lease price would be whatever he does for 20 or 30 years, generally we want to keep it at 20 years. So now that person is paying the homeowner association plus the lease for whatever that is. But the intention here is, is to actually develop these 12 locations and actually sell them and have people bring in their own option for the property. Does that answer that question or was I...
Right, and how, do you know approximately how much the HOA fees are going to be? Because you're talking about a $200,000 home potentially, and then the HOA fees, how much would that be? And they would have to pay their own insurance then, correct, for homeowners insurance?
That is correct, and the HOA fees would generally be between, let's say, $175 and $275 a month, which actually amateurized over the 12 units, would actually cover a chunk of the initial construction cost, but it would also cover, a portion of that would go to the ongoing maintenance. But I'm, homeowners, the homeowner fees would be somewhere in the 200, 250 range.
And you put in a, a community well?
Nope, so right now, there's six wells on the property. I was going to get to that whenever I got to the utilities. But your question is pretty straightforward. Again, Holly mentioned that we didn't provide a schedule because we didn't know where we were going yet, but we would look this winter, we've already done the asbestos inspection on the properties, we already are ready to take out a demolition permit, we would actually do the demolition this winter. And then, we would need to take those six wells, have a well driller come in. You actually have to test the flow rate, the drawdown rate on the wells to determine how many services you can actually get off of it. The document that she showed in there is a pretty common manifold system with a, with a pressure regulator and a tank where you can actually run it there and then, once we knew which wells were viable, we would lay it out on the final plat for water service, depending on how we have to connect to those wells. But right now, we have six wells to start with, I'm pretty sure we're going to get by with only four. There's six on there right now that seem to be more than functioning. So we provided a preliminary plat and a preliminary construction plan. To answer your question, Mr. Lutz, I believe that what I'm looking for tonight is for us to agree that our layout is a better layout than what the city provided and the city engineer came back and told us, that this is actually a better layout. And you can approve it with conditions, and we can finalize the construction plans, but we believe that this is a very viable opportunity, or this is a very viable layout that allows us to utilize the land, bring in some areas where we can get affordable housing, handle stormwater, take care of utilities, have lots of open space, we have open space here and here. Holly mentioned that we don't really have a specific on the open areas, but an HOA isn't going to want to put up a playground set or anything, I mean, the liability is incredible, but you still have open areas that everybody would know that are open areas that kids can play, you can walk your dog, the HOA would take care of making sure you pick up your dog mess and would govern the, govern the property. Schedule would be, as I said, demolition this winter and construction next year for the utilities and the roadway. The government services, as Holly mentioned, off of 28th, gas, electric, and sanitary. Austin utility is requested... Did I provide it? I think I did. Well, here's the deal. Nope, it's right here. Hold on. So Austin utility said they wanted a 15-foot easement on both sides, but I, I don't, I don't think, I don't think they were really clear on what we were doing with a private roadway because you don't really need an easement around the roadway because you're going to have a roadway there that's going to be an easement anyways. The entire roadway, and right now we show it as 24 feet, we can put extras, extra, an extra side on it that would be in what's, what, what we would call in surveying would be a utility and drainage easement overlay. So the road is private, the roadway would be handled under the development agreement and in the conditions of the HOA. But this area would actually be an easement shown on the final plat where utilities would go. So they asked for 15 feet on both sides of the road. That's more like what you'd ask for if you thought it was a right-of-way. But whatever we have to do here, we can work with Austin Public Utilities and make sure that we have plenty of room for, we've got to have the sanitary sewer in there, electric, low voltage, gas have to be in there. And then, in the final plat, we would actually show the final design for the water. The water is its own issue, Holly brought it up. We'd have to go to the Department of Labor and Industry and we would have to go to the Department of Health, even though in this particular case, they're the same thing. But we would have a private water distribution system that would have to be approved by the state for us to feed all of those houses. And then there was another comment she had highlighted. Each one of them would have an individual shut-off in that easement for access to it. That's the easiest way I know to take care of that.
What if you don't receive approval, like from the state you mentioned on the water? What's the plan then? Because you do halt the project or do you, at that point, you need to connect to the city or are you going to try to make the wells?
No, I believe that, I, I don't, I don't really see a condition there. I've done quite a few manufactured home facilities, I've done different applications, and my submittal to the Department of Labor and Industry really just requires time. Believe it or not, I just got, two weeks ago, I got a, I got a, I got a July approval on a project I submitted in April. They just take forever these days. But they're the ones that do it, and as long as I comply with all of the plumbing code, I don't really see an issue. Materials, joints, fixtures, fittings, I believe it can all get called out for approval. But Holly's right, Department of Labor and Industry has the final say on this, on the plumbing permit, that they're the ones that make it happen. I already mentioned we have to test the wells.
Mr. Conway, I just have one question to follow up on the water. There, right now, we don't have anything in the bylaws that reference the, how the water would be handled between the HOA and the residence, but you had mentioned something about that. So that would still have to be flushed out in the bylaws.
So this is a, this is a very interesting question, and I think the person that we're going to drive crazy with this is going to be your fire marshal. Because if I'm going to put a hydrant on the property, then under normal conditions, I would have to have a public utility easement to that hydrant and the water line that goes to that hydrant needs to be public. So I'm not sure how exactly we have to work that out, but I have to work that out with city engineering and with the fire department. Because if I am required, right now, I don't, I don't believe that a hydrant is required on, on, on a PUD in this rural setting. However, if I do have to put a hydrant in there, I'm going to have to run one up each road, and that should satisfy what the fire marshal is saying, but how we, how we, how we build that water line coming off of a private well for access to the, to the fire marshal? That's going to be, that might be a maintenance agreement, that might be something that, that's a little bit crazy, but the fire marshal is going to have to figure it out and city engineering is going to have to tell me how to write it. But I'm assuming I can write an agreement for maintenance where they can maintain their hydrant and keep that water line there and we can use a water well. It's just generally you don't see a lot of, you don't see a lot of hydrants on water wells, you just don't see a lot of them. So if he requires us to do it, I think we got enough wells on site, but I don't know how we're going to write the agreement, but that's what we would be faced with.
I also was thinking of the actual bylaws that you included.
You made a good point. It's another item. I will say this, in the bylaws, it was a generic order, a lot of things have to be specified, but all of the, you know, roadway maintenance has to be specified, all of the utility maintenance has to be specified, and if we do decide to put a public water line in there off of a private well, we've got to write an agreement to solve that problem. There's no doubt about it. So going through these items, I believe that right now, where I am with the commission tonight, is I believe that, that this application is actually a very good application for what we want to do in the southeast quadrant of Ramsey Park. I believe that we have an opportunity here to initiate future growth, not only to the north on some of those properties, but also going off to the west. Down the road, if something was required, you could certainly say it was required, but I believe that any trail or sidewalk, pedestrian access actually lies over on 11th. I believe in this community development, walking up and down the street, a rural setting, ditches, access, free open spaces all the way around kind of handles what that part of the zoning code requires. I don't want to do curb and gutter because curb and gutter is, and I don't believe that any of the properties to the north or over to the west actually have that. actually have that. And maybe somebody's just gonna tell me, well, we changed our ordinance, and now you have to do something. But none of these have sidewalks. Um this area right here, if we're developing this, you're gonna come over here. The hardest part is actually getting somebody down to this trailhead or across the way into the park. I believe that we offer open spaces and park to park access. Well, you're driving, you're, you're, you got kids walking and pedaling down 11th. I don't know, I don't know any other way to deal with that one. Um you have uh these areas over here, but the stuff that's actually been developed and the newer stuff um doesn't have curb and gutter, doesn't have sidewalk, uses rural sections, and it's a very nice um application um and development um that we've seen in this area. In the future, as development starts to move north, there's a lot more things that are gonna happen. Lot more utility design up that county road. Um this area, um this entire area, there's a lot of things that are gonna happen there, but I don't I guess for where I'm starting right now, I believe that we're ten to fifteen, maybe even twenty years down the road, unless somebody actually buys this property and starts to do something. Um that's where I am on um on that particular item.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Um why wouldn't you just put curb and gutter and some of those expectations that eventually could be in place? Wouldn't it be more cost-effective to do it now than ten to fifteen years down the road? When those property owners who purchase it that aren't expecting that, now all of a sudden are having to pay for that themselves, right? Or would the HOA absorb that?
Nope. So the biggest problem in a rural setting with curb and gutter is, is it raises everything and just puts a whammy in your stormwater treatment. So right now, when you look at that drawing, everything surface drains, and we have a stormwater pond that actually discharges at a level that can use the surrounding culvert system for final discharge that comes down into this farm field. So to put curb and gutter and actually build something at curb and gutter, now all of a sudden you need catch basins, now all of a sudden you need four feet of depth. Well, if you put four feet of depth on this road right here, you you can't feed the pond. If that makes sense to you. I mean, you're, right now, you're surface draining into the pond, and then it bounces up about two or three feet, and then it discharges. Well, now, all of a sudden, if I have to put pipe in here and discharge into that stormwater, everything's already surcharged. Every pipe in this network is already three feet below water, which means all the pipes hold water. So if there was any future development around here, particularly up here to the north, if there's any future development up here, or this property down here starts to get developed, there's an option there, but right now, it's a really difficult hydrology issue. A hydrology problem to actually get pipe in the ground and have it discharge into a pond on a relatively flat site. And when I say flat, this this contour that runs around this road is at twelve twenty-one. This is at twelve twenty, twelve nineteen, which is this drainage ditch. This discharge right out here in that culvert where the water's supposed to go is at twelve eighteen. So that means I have to fill up my pond and then discharge the water out of the pond into that culvert. So right now, the site is so flat that there's not really an, on a, uh, an, a really good viable option to put pipe in there with curb and gutter. Could still put curb and gutter in there, I guess, and it could just surface drain. Um certainly an option. But um we're calling out for a twenty-four-foot driveway. Uh putting the signs there, no parking either side, and making sure that there's plenty of access to parking spaces on every one of those lots is doable. But uh the site is so flat that we really run into trouble if we start to put something underground under that roadway. And it's, it's not overcome, you know, I mean, you could overcome things, but right now, it surface drains to that pond nicely, and then it bounces up two or three feet, and then it discharges off of the deal, and we'll put it in that culvert. If that helps you. Uh let's see. I've given you the properties, I've given you all the items. I hope this actually helps you, and then I gave you the memorandum that I wrote um why we wanna do this. Um financing the development agreement will require that we produce um a letter of credit for the estimated construction costs. I don't actually know what bank the owner will use or how he'll do it, but he'll use a letter of credit for a hundred or a hundred and ten percent, whatever the city of Austin requires, that will guarantee the construction costs for the property.
So will you just go in and build twelve homes, or are you just gonna one at a time?
So we'll go in and put in all of the utilities.
Yeah.
The lots, first of all, will be for sale. People can come in and actually do it, and it'll be approved for modular homes or slab-on-grade. And with the utilities, the cost of the property, and the extra cost to actually come in there, we're going after a particular um, we're going after a particular clientele who can come in and have a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar, um, excuse me, um, bank approval and purchase either a new um slab-on-grade home, a patio home, or bring in a modular home and connect all the utilities to it, put in the foundations and attach the the um utilities to the home. So first of all, they'd be for sale.
Okay.
To inspire sales, maybe one or two actually get put in there for sale or lease. But I think once things start to happen out in this neck of the woods for those costs, I think we'll see something happen rather quickly in two to four years for all twelve of those properties. It's just the way the market is right now.
Okay.
Uh do you have any other questions of me? I hope I've answered anybody in the in the gallery here.
And either one of you put up that drawing that showed the blue utility easements on? Nope. Do you have it there?
I do.
I'm trying to understand, if I, if I choose to be an owner in this planned unit development, planned urban development, and I'm gonna own number eight, what do I own?
So you have a um, based on the final plat, you'll have a legal description for that property.
For just what is shown as eight is seventy-two feet by?
That is correct.
Yeah.
And then you will have utilities to your property line. And then um
Who, who owns everything that's not in a numbered rectangle?
The HOA is responsible for all the maintenance, and they would actually construct it all, and the maintenance agreement would be in the HOA for maintaining those utilities and keeping them operational.
Okay, so you're, are you intending to do this as a common interest community?
So the way your zoning code is written, common interest community would only apply to a manufactured home product, the way I read it.
A common interest community uh establishes ownership of the common elements of a development and also establishes the private ownership of the rectangles so that those can be deeded separately and transacted on separately. But there is a recorded document that says this entity owns all of the common interests and what their obligations are vis-à-vis maintenance, up, up, updating, repairs, waters, uh you know, systems, all of the things that we're talking about tonight would normally be in a common interest community. If you have a, just a standard HOA, that means everything in the neighborhood is privately owned in different boxes, but there's an agreement amongst all the owners to do some things for, whether it's lawn mowing or shoveling or 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 what have you, or maybe just restrict you from doing things. Your house has to be a certain color, it has to have a certain type of landscaping. So in this one, that's what I, why I was asking the questions. There are going to be commonly owned elements of this development that are not owned. If I own number eight, I own number eight, but I own a interest in the common parts, right?
Can I answer that one?
Yeah, it sounds like that. I mean, um, that's what I was understanding, how it would be organized, and I did make that statement a few times, but we do have common interest communities in Austin, like downtown where the artwork center is.
Yep.
And the bakery, that's a common interest community.
So I may have misunderstood you at the beginning, because when you and I talked, Holly, you indicated that the only place that we had a CIC available to us was under a manufactured home community. The initial
Yeah, that must have been a misunderstanding.
Yeah, the, the initial document that I turned in to you back in May was actually the CIC plat. And I, I, we already, we already have it drawn, but it was your direction towards me that we should go towards the PUD. And I'm good either way.
PUD is a zoning
Yeah, they're two different
category. The CIC is a different way to organize a commonly owned property. So they're two different things to me.
Right.
And your recommendations, sir?
Yeah, so a, a planned urban development district is a plan for a piece of land that modifies or violates various zoning provisions or or whatnot, because we need to do that in order to accomplish a goal that can otherwise be done. Whether it's an HR, a, HOA arrangement where everything's privately owned, and you just have an agreement in an HOA agreement amongst the owners to do certain things, or a common interest community where there are common interests that are owned separately from the privately owned units is a development question for, for you on how you're organizing it. It's not, I mean, it doesn't make a big difference to us from a zoning perspective, except it helps me understand whether this is viable and whether or not if you sell two of these units and never sell another one, what we're left with. Uh or who is it that, when the homeowners don't pay their dues, we go to to say your, your commonly owned assets are not being maintained properly? It helps me understand what your long-term vision is and how you wanna structure it.
So either in the CIC or in the HOA, the owner developer would own all of the, all of the, all of the lots until he sells them. So in this case, there's twelve lots. Until he sells lot seven, he would have the, he would have the majority say in the HOA. And in the HOA document, it would actually spell out that the HOA is responsible, based on whatever fees you pay, to actually maintain the private utilities, to maintain the road, maintain the common space, and maintain the stormwater pond.
You know, this developer have legal counsel that that maybe could clarify whether the CIC is happening or not, 'cause I think we're all understanding each other, but I'm not sure that we're precisely meeting up on what we're talking about. And I, and I don't wanna get too deeply into it, but when I was looking at in this document, which is why I asked for it, is there's a very specific rectangle there. And then there's space, so that would be commonly owned.
Yep.
Then there's space, that's commonly owned. Then there's your water retention pond, that's commonly owned. There's space between the front of the lot that you buy and the utility easement and the street. So I just, I wanted to better understand, 'cause I looked at the bylaws, and as Holly noted, bylaws don't really say much or make any promises or anything. It's just like, you know, the homeowners will decide stuff in the future. But this is a lot of responsibility for commonly owned sites. And my concern is, you have successful CICs, we have those
Yes.
in town, and then you have those that got off the ground and had one unit built and then failed. And then, you know, years later, a new developer comes in and we have to try to figure out how to extract it back out of what it, what it was created to be, 'cause not enough people bought it. And 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 this is not a positive nor negative towards the CIC thing, but it is something to contemplate that when these things get developed originally, the, the dream is, in four years, there'll be, all of these will be covered with houses, and that's a success. And the developer made money and it, and it worked out, maybe. But sometimes it ends up that they build the one model and then nothing happens, and then ten years from now, they're abandoning it because it didn't work, and somebody else is coming
And Mr. Byram is right, there, there are two different processes. The CIC would have a CIC plat, which is actually part of a declaration which gets filed, and it goes straight through Mauer County, and Mauer County assigns um the CIC number to it. And the declaration then has a set of bylaws that go with it. This is a PUD, which is a common usage. And we don't, we, 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 we like the private road. We aren't abutting anything other than the entrances to public right-of-way. And we can write in the bylaws how it actually gets addressed, and the owner, developer, owns everything until there's enough assets sold that somebody else actually has seven votes versus his five. Either one is fine, and I have originally submitted the CIC plat, and it sounded like we didn't wanna go that route, but I already have the CIC plat drawn, and um the only difference, believe it or not, is, is that Mauer, it goes straight through Mauer County. Technically, I'm not submitting a preliminary plat to you guys.
Right. The CIC plat is to record so that on title, we know who owns what. The plats we're dealing with are, does the, will the roads cause any issues or problems that we can address before they're constructed, instead of ten years from now, and we have to address them at a less comfortable time? It, does the, does the water system and the easements and the facilities and all those things, all the things we think of in any other plat context, that's why we're doing the, the plats here. The CIC is an overlay that just helps me understand who will own this ten years from now? Who will, when, when the decision comes that it's no longer gonna be a water retention pond, but somehow it's gonna be curb and gutter with who actually will own?
That's your question.
And, and with a CIC, it's recorded, somebody owns it, there's responsibility in theory. Um but it helps me just contemplate that from a legal standpoint. I think it's important eventually to hear from the city.
Thank you, Mike. He doesn't normally attend.
So um, right now, where I'm at is I'd like you to Is he here?
Is he here?
Oh, I haven't met you before, Les Conway. Nice to meet you.
You don't have to stay. It's a nice job staying awake.
Thanks. So the surveying question is a good one. I'm, 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 I'm good with either application. You have a clear-cut zoning code that spells out the PUD, and the bylaws of the HOA can be clearly written to satisfy the city attorney for most of these items, because all the utilities are private and we're only connecting um sanitary sewer. The CIC has its own benefits. However, the CIC doesn't provide preliminary and final plats. It simply provides a CIC plat that gets recorded with the declarations and gets approved by the county surveyor. Different, different process. And as long as we're clear on it, I'm, I'm open either way, 'cause I already submitted a CIC, and all I have to do is regenerate it according to this, but
To me, they're not competing processes. They're different things. CIC just defines who owns this long-term. The PUD may have a CIC, may not have, and it's common interest community, we keep using CIC, but I don't wanna lose anybody. Common interest community, it may have that as an aspect, it may not have that as an aspect. You could have designed this with twelve lots where every single square inch of this is privately owned by a different homeowner, and then they have an HOA that deals with common stuff, like, like the water system or whatever that's gonna all be shared. You could have a well agreement, you could have a water agreement. Everybody, though, would individually own chunks. A CIC says, we all own chunks, but it doesn't cover the whole thing. Then all the open space and all the road and all the, that's all owned, titled in a different name. So the two things are different. A CIC plat is to define what is common and what is gonna be individual. This plat that we're dealing with is a PUD plat that we're looking at from this, the standpoint, does it cause problem for fire? Does it cause problem for police? Does it cause problem with traffic? Does it cause problem with Does it cause problem with utilities? Totally different issues. Your interest is, A, are any of those problems present? B, is this viable and will it get completed and does it have a chance of getting filled? Because you don't approve these things if they're very likely to die, which is, which is why, for instance, the letter of credit says, I've got the money to complete this. This is my budget for building the road, I've got the money to complete this. Because you don't want it half completed and then the money runs out. And now you're sitting there with a property with half a road. So there's, there's, that's your environment. The county recorder's process is, we just need somebody later to be able to look and say, who owns number seven? And if they own number seven, do they own a 72-foot by 100-foot rectangle? Or do they own something else totally separate? The county's process does not really impact you, except it helps me understand, is this viable? Who are the players? Where's this going, going forward on what the vision is? So I don't want to suggest that we're switching from a P U D to a C I C. What I'm saying is, in considering the P U D, one of the things is who owns stuff later? And a C I C will define who owns stuff, that's all.
Okay. Do you have, you want me to leave now? Do you have any?
Do you have any questions for our city engineer or for the public who is attending?
I'm curious as to if there's any.
I mean, you, or open it up to the public.
I guess after.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, does anyone have any more questions before we open it up for public comment?
No, I thought I was public.
Okay.
Cool.
Thank you.
Well, he's the developer, he's the applicant.
I don't, I don't really count.
All right, anybody here?
First because you're the most important.
Anybody here that wants to speak?
Come on up.
Just state your name and address for the record.
Kretschmer, uh, 1302 30th Avenue Northeast. Okay, uh, the 12, 12 lots, that's quarter acre lots, that's kind of really narrowing that down. And they're, each, each of his existing lots are about half acres. Then you're going to cut them. Then you're going to put another access road in between them. And then he's talking about future development that really cuts our property limits out there. I've lived out there for 40-some years. And uh, only reason those became vacant was because it pushed all the people, low-income people out of there in the first place when we got annexed. And I don't see people moving in quarter acre lots for 250 grand. That's, you know, plus we're, there's talk about recession coming now. I mean, during this presidential stuff that's going on, they're talking that we may be in a full-blown recession. Is this going to get finished? Is this a pipe dream? Uh, is it going to change our water table out there? Because the lots that this is proposed on are the lowest lots out there. And how many of those wells, their sandpoint? Do we know their sandpoint or what their depth is? What they're going to do to the rest of our wells out there? If you're drawing, you know, 12 versus the six that were, were there originally? You know, you're doubling everything. Uh, I'm just concerned about the whole development. There were, were too many uh, unanswered questions so far. As far as um, conditional use? I almost heard a commercial use in there in the beginning when she was reading through some of that. So is this strictly going to be residential?
Yeah, I was just trying to clarify. I was just trying to clarify that for many uses, we can use a conditional use permit and some of those are commercial, this one is residential.
Yeah, but.
This does not allow commercial, I, I'm just saying.
Okay, that's.
There are things, there were things in the ordinance that kind of referenced something that might be more commercial than residential.
And I misunderstood the part where you were going through that. And then you, you said the use, but then it left it open on a commercial.
No, 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 I didn't mean that at all.
I didn't quite catch that when that was going through. But just concerns in general and a general consensus of the people who have lived out there for all the past 40 years. I got neighbors that, we've been neighbors for 40-some years. We enjoy our lots out there. We're not looking right out and staring into someone else's house. We got a little room to breathe and stuff. And then half-acre lots, they're, they're putting houses on quarter acre lots. And we're restricted to 1,200 square feet of outbuildings. And we have half-acre lots. I mean, I have a backyard, sure, I could put another house on it if I could afford, you know, afford to develop, but we're kind of dividing this in a point where, you know, how's it going to end like you guys? Like you mentioned later, is this going to be a finished product? Or is it a pipe dream of someone else? You know, I, I just don't know if it's the land to do this with, is what I'm saying. Not, I just kind of wanted to state a little bit of my objection till I hear a more defined, final. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
If they're going to put roads through there, I'm Dave's wife, Becky Kretschmer. If they even begin to, our water table is so high now. If they develop where he's talking about and those 12 plots, and then they want to put a raised road in there and there's no water, there's no sewer, there's no water, he's going to flood everybody else out. I have a problem with that. He's going to dump all the water onto the other side of the block.
Stephen?
That's my issue, my main issue is that. We don't, we have homeowners. We don't have renters. We have one rental and it has been purely a problem with, from drugs to the police patrolling twice a day now, um, to dogs that don't, owners don't follow the leash laws, et cetera. That all comes with renters. We're not used to that out there. Like my husband said, we've been there for some time. The neighbors all know each other. I mean, there, there's many, many issues with this.
Stephen, what's your take on the, the stormwater management out there?
I have one question for Mr. Conway. Have you done a wet, have you completed a wetland delineation for this area?
May I speak from here?
Come on up. This is recorded, so it's good to get your voice.
All right. Les Conway, W F C Massey. So I provided the, on the SWIP, um, the soil survey map shows only one legend of hydric soils in the southwest corner. And those soils were looked at. Uh, go up to the next one, nope, nope, down, 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 right there.
Here.
That line in the southwest corner is the only hydric soil um, horizon that's out there. And that's actually high ground and we took a preliminary look at it. And we did not find any, um, we did, we did not find um, anything that required Mauer County to delineate. Um, the rest of the property is non-hydric soils. And what we actually see in the southeast corner and the northeast corner is simply poor culverts that have allowed water to uh, pond. And it doesn't drain, many of the, many of the culverts are actually blocked. Uh, but right now, preliminarily, we only have that southeast, southwest corner that we would actually uh, get a hold of uh, Tim Rusick in Mauer County. And um, do, we'll, we do the whole property, but those are the only ones we're concerned with.
Okay, but you haven't completed a wetland delineation and submitted that to the T E P through Mauer County yet?
We have not.
Okay. Um, the concern that the homeowners raise about high water table, that this area is very common for high water. Um, the properties directly to the north of this area, um, there are some undeveloped parcels that are low-lying ground and generally wet condition. Um, so that's why I asked about any wetland delineation across these parcels that are proposed to be developed. If I could just expand on a few other things, all right?
Absolutely.
So, so many obstacle, I wrote down some notes here. Many obstacles that were, have been discussed tonight, like drainage, municipal water, curb and gutter sidewalks. Generally, a community develops from, from within and develops out. The issue with, the concern with this development that's brought about many of these issues and concerns is that it's disconnected from the general uh, recognized development areas of Austin. And so when you leapfrog out into a new area, you create something that's disconnected from municipal water. It's disconnected from storm sewer and, and it, it's on a gravel road. We have maybe five gravel roads in Austin. Um, so it's very unique to have a development adjacent to a gravel road. What, the, the, the road is gravel currently because of very low vehicle usage. As this, this development occurs, will this generate dust and complaints from other homeowners that live on that gravel road? And so it, it functions now fine, will it function well as a gravel road in the future? Um, so, um, let's see, what else? One of the few gravel roads, additional traffic may impact the, the gravel road. This development, um, which has been talked about a couple of different times, is very similar to Austin Acres. Austin Acres was an area like this that was annexed, city sewer was extended out to it. And over a period of time, it developed and filled into a point now where we are looking at, we have walkers on narrow roadways. We have um, different urban development issues in an rural developed area. And planning maybe wasn't, uh, um, maybe there was a push for, let's take any development we can and, and we'll deal with roads and infrastructure in the future. Um, Commissioner Swenson was kind of asking that question about, do you set this up now so that it's set up properly for the future? And planners and engineers 10, 20 years down the road aren't dealing with it because it was set up properly early on in the process. And that's where we're at with Austin Acres. And I think Austin Acres would be a very similar uh, development as in, as this, as compared with this neighborhood. Um, the drawings that the engineering department provided were just a, a tool to give you a visual of what this area could look like. There's nothing set in stone with where those roads could be placed if this was a more urban curb and gutter city development. It was just to give you an idea of, of what this area would look like if it were connected to the greater port, developed portions of the city. Um, a, a big con, a big concern, I would say, that, that would be making this area stand out and could cause us issues down the road with future development elsewhere in the community is that it is uncommon, it's rare, it's some, it may even be non-existent to allow a development to occur with wells. Um, water distribution, municipal water um, is, to my knowledge, almost 100% required in a development. So that is a very unique thing that this would kind of be a standout. You know, if you look at like a Nature's Ridge development by the Nature Center.
Where is water?
If, if they were, if Nature's Ridge was to come in and propose a development with residential wells and say, well, you know, you let this one go up by Ramsey Park, you know, why won't you let mine go? It's just, so it's just floating that out there that, that is a big concern. And he mentioned, uh, Mr. Conway mentioned how uh, the fire protection and those issues that go along with wells um, just exacerbate that issue of not having municipal water in this area. Um, to answer Mr. Conway's question, water, municipal water is available at 11th Street. Uh, those were the notes that I made, I believe, and be happy to answer any other questions that come along.
Uh, with regard to uh, along the same lines, it's going to be, he's proposing private sewer that then ties into the city system on, on, is it 28th, I think? What, how does, how does that work? Have we done that before?
Uh, yeah, I can think of an air, different areas where uh, private sewer extensions uh, were extended into areas and then service lines were uh, developed off from that for individual connections. And then ultimately it tied into a city gravity system, yes. That is more, that is, that happens.
And then do you bill that? How do you?
Sure.
Who pays for that on the private side?
Uh, well, the developer would be responsible for the extension of all of the utilities. And then there would be a cost where they connect to the city sewer main. There would be a lump sum hookup fee for connecting into our system, a one-time hookup fee.
Then how are they billed going forward then? Are, how are they metered, I guess?
Sure, so if they have municipal water, um, everybody that has municipal water has a water meter and that's how your sewer bill is determined. If this would be allowed to move forward with wells, each home would need to put a meter at their home to meter the water usage at their home. That would then determine their sewer bill.
So I'm not sure I quite agree with the city engineer. I've done several uh, subdivisions. I'm doing one in Mantleville right now that has uh, private wells because the water isn't there. But I, 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 I would be okay if water is actually at 11th. Extend water all the way down to my road, to the road. But I sure don't want to be charged a whack fee if I'm building the water all the way down there. Because if I'm already paying for the whack, if I'm already paying for the water extension down there, I am already giving the city the benefit of it. And so whatever that whack fee is, certainly doable, but it may not be that big of a deal. Bringing water all the way down there and not having to worry about the wells. Certainly doable. But it would be a double whammy on the development if you not only have to put the water in to everybody's benefit, because I don't get any of the, the, the developer doesn't get any of the benefit having water down 28th Street. There is no way to actually come back and say, hey, the people along that road now have to pay me. I'm just talking as a developer, have to pay me for actually extending that. You would not only get those whack charges, but then you would get whack charges for 12 parcels in there. I think if an agreement could be made, I certainly, I certainly see where I could see actually extending the water down 28th. So it is public water. Big one would be that we get the benefit of not getting charged on the charges. Because we're actually giving the city, that's going to be, I believe it's 670 feet of water main that we're putting in that you would actually, in it, you would have the opportunity to get the, the charges on. The other part is, is that I, I, I just can't emphasize that a P U D is designed so that we can actually keep things private and maintain all of those utilities. The development here is in a rural setting. There's county roads all over, or there's gravel roads all to the north, those were all put in. So somebody knows that this is a rural setting. But I would gladly work with the city engineer on this. And I believe the only other question is, is that the city. and I believe the only other question is, is that the city attorney and the commission needs to tell me whether or not I have to use a CIC declaration and plat, or if I can keep it as a PUD.
I don't think it's my role to give you personal legal advice, that's why I asked if the developer had an attorney. Cause that's a choice the developer would make, it's not a choice that I'm gonna force you to do one way or another. Your plat would appear that you intend to use a CIC, and when I look at it, it looks like a plat that was developed for a CIC.
You are absolutely correct, and we were given different direction, yeah. And so if we change that direction, I'm perfectly fine with it.
I wasn't, I wasn't discussing with you the organization of the, the subdivision, but just the, the plan to do a manufactured home park had certain requirements that weren't met from a zoning perspective. So that's what I, that's what I was talking about when, when I said it wouldn't work as a manufactured home park, but not as, I know we
Yeah, the CIC plat before the planning commission.
I think it's in, it's important, cause it's been brought up a number of times that there are gravel roads here and further north. To, to recall, those developments happened when those areas were completely outside the jurisdiction of the city of Austin. Those gravel roads were constructed and, and permitted or whatever happened in their history, long before they were annexed into the city of Austin. And one of the things we run into trouble with often is when we have to annex, and some of this probably had to do with sanitary sewer systems. But when we're forced to annex in areas to save them from sanitary sewer problems, for instance, we inherit those gravel roads and we inherit those underbuilt roads and those developments that weren't completed. And the owners come and they're very upset that there's now gonna be a new road constructed up to, you know, code, and that they're gonna be assessed for that, even though their existing road is deteriorating and has never been maintained properly. And we run into a, a difficult political thing where people say, but I bought my house and I paid for all this, and why am I having to pay for it again? And it's because when it was developed out in the county, they didn't have any standards and it was, it was underbuilt and fire trucks can't operate on them and, you know, you've seen, that's happened. Not saying it's gonna happen here, but that's the explanation for why areas north of here are underdeveloped. It's not because we thought it would be great to have a rural development two miles outside of Austin, and then treat it like it was inside of Austin, it was developed out there without our oversight. And then because of sewer problems or other issues, we annexed in parts and then assumed those problems. So that's true here, and it's, and it's true further north. It's not as if we at some point said gravel roads are perfectly fine here, that was not a decision the city of Austin ever made.
When was this annexed? Does he even remember?
Two thousand and ten.
Well, some of this is growing pains of taking something that's developed in, in the township and trying to incorporate, and that's what Engineer Lang was saying, is normally we see the new development right next to town and the, the process of the roads and everything else is logical and it makes sense. We don't often see leapfrogged out this far, boom, we have an island of residential development that's now being redeveloped, that was developed at the time when it was in the township, and now we're having to answer questions, how does this fit, how does this fit into Austin? So these are unique because of that history.
So are, are all of the houses out in that area connected to the sanitary sewer, to the, to our sewer system? But not, not everybody has water?
When we annexed the area, as our city attorney discussed there, we, it was annexed to solve a, a failing septic systems. So we extended gravity sanitary sewer to the entire area. Uh, water was not elected to be extended at that time due to cost.
Alright, um, we've been all over the map tonight, so help me out here. Is there something we need to decide tonight, and if so, could you please explain to me what it is?
Well, on, on a PUD, this is, this follows a very similar pattern to a plat. So you have the preliminary review where you look at it conceptually. You look at the feedback from the various departments and agencies who've provided feedback, so fire, engineering, um, you know, sometimes in other places, it's telecom and all sorts of feedback. But you look at that and you say, does this make, is this something that we think should get off the ground? Is this something that makes sense to us? If so, what do we need to see in a final plat to make this actually work? And so then you send it forward with, if you think it should get off the ground, preliminary approval conditioned upon this information, that information, change this, you know, add that. And then it goes to the second meeting later where they bring back with all those things addressed and say, here's the final. And that goes to the council and we just review it to say, did they meet everything we told them to meet? If so, then it's a go. So tonight it's just, does this make sense, does this fit? Are there issues with this that you don't think there are changes to the plan that could be, could make it work? If so, the answer is no. If you think this seems to work fine and that this seems to be something we wanna pursue, then we have the discussion about what, uh, you, does the developer need to bring back in a final?
Mr. Byram, could you address the sixty day rule as well?
Yeah, so on, some of these, I think a conditional use permit is one of them, there's sixty days from the date that's, that's, that, that, that the application is filed where if you don't act on it, it's deemed approved. And so I was asking Ms. Wallace about when were these things formally, you know, submitted so that we can keep track of that. Now, the developer can agree to extensions of those and, and should give us time to do, work out the process. Uh, but we have to be mindful of that. So if the, if the sixty days is going to, gonna come and, and we don't have a final answer, then you're almost forced to deny and say, you know, bring it back. Uh, because otherwise, if you take no action at all, it's deemed, it's deemed approved.
And it's common for a sixty day extension, and we would agree to it.
Yep. Thank you. So, to the extent that that's a problem, uh, he's agreeable to a sixty day extension, so we shouldn't be under the gun.
So we would be tabling it for sixty days, is that the three?
So this is, this is a ques- I'm not gonna tell you how to answer the, the questions. If you think it, it makes sense and it's something to get off the ground, then we discuss what he might need for a final. If you feel like there's missing information you need before you can even answer that preliminary question, then we continue the hearing to next month and we give him a list of things that we wanna see as part of the preliminary. You know, in Ms. Wallace's review of what was, you know, required to be submitted, there were a number of items that maybe weren't full, fully supplied or answered. So it would be fair to say, we don't feel like we have the whole package yet there, questions that we still have that haven't been answered. To even decide whether we wanna move forward on this at all, then we would say, we'll meet at the next meeting and, and get more information on those subjects. Or if tonight you're ready to say, no, so, you can say no. Or if tonight you're willing to say yes, but we need some conditions, then we need to talk about what are those conditions that would come back at the final?
And then correct me if I'm wrong, we basically have to address the PUD and then this, the conditional use purpose, separate, and the conditional use permit is the sixty day thing. So we could technically table the PUD, get some more information, deny the CUP so that we wouldn't have to worry about the sixty days, come back here, get more information, or reapply for this, the conditional use permit.
They're so intertwined, I mean, the reason that a conditional use permit is, is put on top of a PUD is that the PUD assumes we're doing something that's not normal. And so you can approve a POD or you can deny a POD, but it's, it's one way or the other. A conditional use permit says, we're gonna approve it, but we have long-term conditions, and if you violate these long-term conditions, we can take all of this back.
As I stated in the beginning, if you deny the CUP, I can't come back for a year.
No, that's denying the PUD.
No, the CUP, right in the ordinance, it says, for the CUP, if the CUP is denied, and I can't come back for a year.
It does give us an out potentially if the planning commission agrees that there are, I guess, circumstances that would, uh, allow it, they could, they could do it, but.
So, so my intention to me is that we start working towards it, and I don't get a denial, so I don't have to worry about a year-long oratorium. That would be, that would be my preference, cause we want, we want this to work.
Yeah, this is the language right here. Uh, let's see, no application of a property owner for a conditional use shall be considered by the planning commission with a one, within a one-year period following a denial of such a request, except the planning commission may permit a new application if in its opinion new evidence of a cha- uh, or a change in circumstances warrants it.
That's to stop people from the, I wanna salvage yard, I wanna salvage yard, I wanna salvage yard until they wear you out.
But it leaves it open where we could.
Yeah, 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 if there's some reason why it's a new situation where you might change your mind, then you can always allow it.
Speaking for myself, and I wanna hear what the rest of commissioners think too, is I, based on what I've heard from the Director of Public Works and from the resident cratchmer, I just don't think we got enough, we know enough about what's going on and the details on this thing to approve a plat going forward for sure, to, to me, we definitely need more information and more time. And I guess I'd like to hear what all you guys think.
I agree, I think there's a lot of missing information in that huge list of items that Ms. Wallace put together, but in addition, I mean, even the Austin Fire Chief said he needed more time to look at it. And then we talked about the fifteen-foot easement from the utility company that we really don't know whether this overlay is gonna work or not. And that I think is key, even on a preliminary plat. So I think we, I, I, my opinion would be to table this matter, get those questions answered before we move forward.
I concur.
I agree.
Continue this to the September meeting, then I just wanna make the language right, cause if you table it, then we have to vote to take it off the table. But if we continue it, then we don't have to redo the notices, it'll just be this hearing continuing into next month.
Okay, but from Holly, from your perspective and from, and yours too, Stephen, is thirty days gonna help? I mean, will we, will we be any better off in thirty days?
I mean, I think it would probably take a little bit longer, but I think we could maybe hash out some of the conditions that we would require in order to move towards a final plat if that was the, if that was the intention. So we could condition things like a, a development agreement with the city. Uh, maybe some agreements with the Austin Utilities about what water might look like. Um. More detailed HOA by law? Yeah, more detailed, um, figuring out the CIC versus HOA. Um, I think we could get maybe some of those together before the next meeting, but yeah, it is a rather short time. Um, they are agreeing to a sixty day extension, so I guess we could continue it again, is there some limit to how many times we can continue it, we just have to meet in order to continue?
Well, we can, you can continue it to next month and continue it again if you don't have a sixty day rule problem. Or you can just continue it to October if you really feel like there's no way you're gonna have what you need by next month. And, and, I don't know, for the developer, then there's ninety days after the preliminary is approved that you have to submit the final, and, and so that can be a tight time window too. So we wanna be mindful of, maybe the developer actually has, uh, additional work to be done.
If we got close to something though, maybe, I don't know, or maybe, maybe we just figure out it's, maybe it's not gonna work, but what do you think, uh, Stephen, as far as timeline? Thoughts?
I, I think water is a big hangup, and it'd be, I don't, I don't know if this is appropriate, but would, would we get some direction from the commission as to where you fall on the water? Is, is a, is a development with wells something we would pursue as a staff level, or is it, or would we, could we get direction on, um, you know, this needs to be municipal water, I think that's a, to me, that's a key piece, along with the HOA agreements and all the other things as well, the, we don't wanna bring something back to you if, uh, that's, if it's a no-go with, with wells or something like that, so I think some direction on that would be helpful for staff.
Well, I have a question about the water cost. If municipal water is brought out, so how many neighbors would be, you know, charged, or would they be forced to connect at that point if it's there?
That would be a policy decision by Austin Utilities, and how they would, um, fund those communal costs, you know, to, to extend right by homes to get it out to this area. Do, is that, are those costs just held by Austin Utilities until the existing homes hook up? Or, or are they forced to hook up at the time and there's a cost incurred right away? Um, yeah, that, again, that's a, that would take some time to work that agreement out if there is direction to go that route with municipal water.
Is there anybody on the commission that thinks that this is an absolute no-go, no matter what they come back with in thirty or sixty days? You don't want that developed?
I don't think so, I don't think that, no.
Does everyone agree it's at least worth continuing to look at the possibility?
I just think there's a lot, oh, like, every department has, that's what we keep coming back to, like, everyone has questions. And we still don't know, you know, like, said, then brought it up, you know, like they were talking about, the size of the lots, and you're, you're ramming stuff in a small area.
I'm also, so the stormwater reservoir? Mr. Conway, you mentioned, if it becomes full, it would purge into the ditches? Is that, did I hear that, understand that right?
So.
The stormwater pond?
Some stormwater design is, is that you have a dead pool. And so there's always water standing in a pond, so you got three feet, let's say. So in a rain event, you get bounce. So now the water from all, from the subdivision flows into the pond and you bounce, so now the water fills up. Now, there's a criteria for discharging the water out of the pond that substantially, it, in, in, in simple terms, is that that pond won't create any more of a hazard when the water starts to come out of it than currently exists, and there's criteria for the pond design. And so when I fill that pond up in a ten-year event, the water bounces up, water starts to go out, and it's gonna follow the normal patterns that water does right now. In particular, it's gonna go underneath that culvert, um, on Fourteenth. It's gonna follow that ditch, and then it's gonna go underneath that driveway, and it's gonna go out into that farm field, that's what it does right now. And that's just a normal pattern.
And it's at a rate that it's not?
We're gonna, we're gonna substantially reduce the rate with the pond. Imagine all of the water hitting at one time on top of six acres. So now all six acres of that water goes someplace. Well now, all six acres of that water goes into a pond, it bounces, and now only a little bit of the water actually comes out. And that's rate control, that's what it's called.
Sure.
So this particular circumstance is that the subdivision drains into the pond, and it is rate controlled out of there so that it does no harm.
So it, in, in essence, you don't feel like it would, a neighbor's ditch would stay wet longer than normal, say, uh, or have standing water?
Actually, actually, by the time we're done with it, that whole area, if you didn't know this, uh, Matt Ralph was in a, I guess a little bit of a disagreement with your Parks and Rec folks, cause they went out there and tried to mow a wet ditch. Bottom line is, by the time we get those culverts replaced and actually improve the drainage, it'll actually be substantially better. Cause right now, most of those culverts out there are plugged, that, that's just, I mean,
Lack of maintenance.
Nobody's, nobody's touched them.
And what was the beef that the Parks and Rec, what happened there, or what's?
Apparently, you know, we've been doing this since May, and, um, I believe the Parks and Rec thought that, uh, weeds along the property line got too high.
I think there was a complaint, that they, they got a complaint about lawn grass, and so then they were required to mow it.
So, the point being is, is that, yeah, we wanna demo those, we wanna grade those properties, we wanna put in new culverts, we wanna improve the drainage all the way across that property. But right now, we're trying to move in that direction.
Okay, thank you.
If I may add, the issue you discussed there, again, the difficulties are in a developed portion of Austin, a pond, it wouldn't just surface overflow, it would be connected into an underground storm sewer system. But again, because this area is detached from development, now it has to be looked at as a different style of overflow and how that's all, it's not a typical design to what we would see in a developed portion of Austin.
Alright, anybody got any other questions? Or anybody? Anybody ready to make a motion?
Did we ever answer Mr. Lang's question about the well systems? If we're going to move forward with approving wells, or if we would require municipal city water? So that they would have that if we were to continue this matter further?
I would want to hear what the, given the two options, what are, what are our choices? Is it, is it all or nothing? Is there something that they can work out together between the city and the developer to get the water down 28th to the development? I mean, what's, I guess, to make that decision, I have to know what, what is the choice? What is it we're choosing between? Because right now, I don't know.
Said differently, your preference is city water, but not if it's so ridiculous that no one would do it. Is that what you're saying? So you want, you, if it, if it's doable, you would like Stephen Lang to explore that with Austin Utilities and bring back to the next meeting how that would work?
Well, yeah, it sounds like that's the option the city wants, is they want to have city water out there, but I want to know what all those ramifications are, if that's doable, and whether or not the developers even agreeable.
Well, I think it would mean something to those potential homeowners to know that that due diligence happened when the subdivision started, instead of saying, we're just going to do it this way, just to, just to get it done, and now it's costing thousands of dollars for those people to upgrade, or to now they have to connect to, to city water.
It was decided before in 2010, or whenever it was, that they put the sewer in not to do the water because of cost to the homeowners, so I doubt that, that position has changed, but is there something that can be worked out with the developer? So I personally can't say tonight that, yeah, I wouldn't approve it unless it's got city water instead of the wells, or I'm okay with wells, depending on how they do it, I don't know. It depends on what the answers are to those other questions.
Then do we need a motion for, we call it a continuance?
Yeah, we need a motion to continue it at least to the next month, if not till October.
And I'm, is there any way we could get that answer in 30 days from Utilities? Versus continuing it 60 days out, get the answer 30 days out, and then?
We would have to start, well, yeah, we don't have to do notices this time, so that's not a, it would just be, yeah, 30 days from now, so. I, I feel like that's a tight timeline, but I...
I would be inclined to go 30 days, and then if we need to, we'll bump it another 30, rather than give them 60 days right up front, because they might just wait longer to get started.
Correct, that's my thought.
And I don't, I don't mean to interrupt and tell me if I'm out of order, but I agree completely with you, is that, as I said in the very opening of my statement, I believe I've only been dealing with Holly. Now that I have a city engineer, and I know that I can talk with Austin Public Utilities, I think we can start to actually negotiate options and bring them forward, so that at the next meeting, you can at least have an update on it, knowing that we're moving in the right direction, or if it just goes to hell, then we'll withdraw our application, if you understand where I'm going with that. But at least we can start to answer some of these questions to give you a, a firm footing to make decisions on, over the course of the next 60 days. We're perfectly fine with that.
Thank you.
One more question?
And just, and just keep in mind the concerns of the folks out here as well.
Yeah. The, my concern, you mentioned grading, regrading the property, uh, from its, what, height level, or are these structures going to stay within four inches high of the middle grade, the level grade? Or are we going to build these properties up where that pushes the water back towards us?
They will be required to control their own water. They can't just push their water off onto all of the neighbors, any, they can't push it off any more than it already does. They can push off the same quantity that currently happens, but they also need to control the new water that they create by adding these impervious structures. And that's where the pond comes in, to store that new water that's created.
All right, I just, I just heard grading where he was going to regrade. Oh, that means raising. I've heard people say that before. The next thing I know, they got a structure up two, three feet higher than everyone else.
There's nothing that says they can't put their structure higher, but they do need to control their water. They can't just push it all off onto the neighbors.
Well, no, they can put their structure up higher, but what I'm saying is, okay, you put your structure up higher, that doesn't mean you're putting your land up high. You're just putting the building up high.
They need to control their water.
Okay, that's, that's something I'd like to have noted in your next meeting, or whatever, what the plan is exactly, on the limitations of the constructions. Thank you.
I'd make a motion to, to, uh, continue this to the September meeting, and have Holly try to give as much information to us as we can get over that period of time between now and then.
With the understanding that the city and the developer are going to work together with Austin Utilities and any other players to try and resolve some of these issues.
Correct.
So it looks like our next meeting would be September 10th?
I second.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Lindberg, and a second from Commissioner Burrows, to continue the matter until the next meeting on September 10th. In the meantime, with the understanding that the city and the developer, and Austin Utilities, and whoever else is involved, work together to try and resolve some of those issues. Any further discussion? Now, we'll go ahead and vote, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries 6-0, we'll continue it until next month. Anything else, Holly?
Uh, no, I don't have anything else, other than, uh, we are working, starting to kick off our comp plan update, and so I'll probably send you some surveys, and if you can encourage people to, to fill those out, and if anybody's interested in being on our, uh, advisory committee, uh, let me know.
All right, anything further from the commissioners? All right. Thank you, Mr. Conway, for coming tonight, giving us all the information.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the neighbors for coming out, putting your voices in there, and thanks, Stephen, for hanging around so late and answering all our questions. Need a motion and a second to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Swenson, and a second from Commissioner Burrows to adjourn. If you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We adjourn.